Speaker of the Torrington City Council, thank you for being here. We'll call the meeting to order and the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance and Kate would you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We want to thank Ryan and Grant Cates from KGOS K E R M for broadcasting this live on ninety-nine point nine FM and eighteen forty AM and also on the YouTube channel. We also want to thank Logan Daly from the Torrington Telegram and turn it over to him for just a minute.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I just wanted to introduce, we have a new reporter that just recently started with us. This is Cindy Shealy. She'll be covering the meetings for the time being and I'm going to try and focus my efforts elsewhere, so I just want to introduce her and welcome her to the gang.
Glad to be here. Thank you. Good luck. Hope it lasts a long time. Do you plan on it being a long time?
I hope so.
All right, we'll move on. First item is to go over the informational items. Well, we've had a first frost and will continue to have more of the same as the season progresses. Sprinklers are being blown out. People are watching for cold fronts coming through. Fall colors dominate the river valleys. Leaves are blowing off the trees and we can soon expect our first snow. Before we have to hunker down with winter weather, we'll encourage everyone to get outside and enjoy this Wyoming fall weather as long as it lasts. As of Friday, October fourteenth, the number of positive COVID cases is up from seven two weeks ago to thirteen. There is one person currently being treated at community hospital for COVID-related illness and it seems like we all know somebody who's recently been diagnosed with COVID. Two weeks ago, the transmission rate was low. It has now been elevated to medium. Going forward, it may change. We don't know at this point. There was a vaccination clinic held today at the Pony Express Room. Next one will be the twenty-fifth of this month. The bivalent Omicron booster is also available. Please call Public Health for an appointment. We continue to ask everyone to be aware of our children, our parents, buses, and the activity that is taking place around our schools. Slow down in those areas. The speed limit in school zones is twenty miles per hour. Lights, signs, and painted crosswalks are visible in all those areas. The police have increased their patrols in those areas where children are present. Please put your phone down, refrain from talking and texting while driving in our community. The city with the support of the Rotary Club will be adding additional crosswalks and signage to be installed in the next couple of months. Please slow down and use caution in those new locations while the projects are being created. This time of year, we all have things to do outside to get our community cleaned up and ready for winter. There's lots of leaves around. Summer plants need to be cleared. Our alleys have weeds and grasses have grown up over the summer. They need to be cleaned up. There are grass and leaf dumpsters located throughout the city. Please refrain from placing anything other than grass and leaves in those dumpsters. Remember to take your separated paper products, cardboard, and aluminum and steel cans to Elk Eco Cycle. They are open Monday through Wednesday from eight to four for your convenience. The Staff and Museum Association at the Homesteaders Museum announces that the Buseum will be open on October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth from six to eight PM. Please call the museum for more information. Also, within the next few weeks, the Goshen County Visitor Center will have moved from their twenty-first and main location to the Homesteaders Museum. We should be hearing within the next two weeks regarding the ARPA request that we've submitted to the state. The city has four major water and wastewater projects designed and ready for funding. They include a wastewater treatment plant, a water line and street resurfacing of East D Street, a water line replacement and street renovation on Albany Avenue, and funding to finish a new water well, including a reverse osmosis unit and the pipeline infrastructure to go with it. There are two candidates for mayor on the general election ballot. They are Dennis Kelly and Herb Dobie. There are three city council candidates for the two open positions on the council. They are Kate Steinbach, Wayne Deal, and Shane Victorin. There are also Goshen County School Board candidates and E W C trustee positions on the ballot. Please inform yourself about these candidates and be an intelligent and informed voter. The results of this election will have dramatic impact on your city and on your county going forward. Also on the ballot is a request from the City of Torrington for a favorable vote creating a stormwater utility. The city's stormwater system is old and in serious need of repair. A revenue stream is necessary to build up a fund whereby the city's stormwater infrastructure can be maintained. There is currently no funding source for stormwater improvement. A permanent and dependable revenue stream is necessary to upgrade our stormwater system. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Councilman Kelly, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have approved the consent agenda. The agenda is as presented with an amendment. So please add Amendment four A. We'll put it between item number four and item number five. Call it four A. It is a special event permit from La Familia Prado Restaurant for a catering permit and we'll discuss that when we get to that point. Other than that, the agenda is as advertised.
I'd move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the amended agenda. Action items. First action item is a catering permit. Julie Miller-Harsberger with the Three Oh Seven Sports Bar and Grill is requesting a catering permit for a City of Torrington Christmas party to be held on December second from five PM to twelve AM at four thirty-six East Twenty-Second Avenue. That is Lincoln Community Complex and they have done it, I believe, in the past. And Matt, do you have any comments to make about this?
Pretty standard group of city requirements that we have with everybody else.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Council, do you have anything?
No, I would approve or move to approve the catering permit for Three Oh Seven Sports Bar and Grill request.
Thank you, Councilman Kenny. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the catering permit for Three Oh Seven Sports Bar and Grill. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved their catering permit. Item number two is a proclamation proclaiming November twenty-two as Epilepsy Awareness Month. Attorney Eddington.
Whereas epilepsy is a neurological disorder producing brief disturbances in the normal electrical functions of the brain that temporarily affects a person's consciousness, body, bodily movements, and our sensations while creating long-term effects of the lifestyle of the individual with epilepsy. One in twenty-six people will develop epilepsy and one in ten will have a seizure in their lifetime. Epilepsy can affect anyone, no matter what their gender, race, age, religion, educational background, or socioeconomic status. Epilepsy is more common than Parkinson's disease, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and cerebral palsy combined. Epilepsy affects more than sixty-five million people worldwide while there is no cure for epilepsy. Drug therapy, surgery, and other non-pharmacological treatments exist, allowing approximately eighty percent of the individuals with epilepsy to lead normal life with either no seizures or significant reduction in seizures. Epilepsy is a complex disorder that requires further research to find a cure and prevention. The annual observance of epilepsy awareness month advocates for the rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with epilepsy, while raising awareness with families, professionals, and the general public to better understand this lifelong disorder. Now therefore, I, Randy L. Adams, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, on behalf of its citizens and staff, do hereby proclaim November twenty-two as Epilepsy Awareness Month. Call upon all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit a community to increasing awareness and understanding of epilepsy through education while ensuring that all individuals with epilepsy lead a full and productive life. Further call upon all citizens to wear purple on the third Wednesday of November in support of all people who fight epilepsy every day.
Thank you. Obviously epilepsy is much more common than most people realize. As Attorney Eddington read, one in twenty-six people will develop epilepsy in their life and one in ten people will have a seizure at some time. So it does happen pretty regularly and I know there's quite a few people in somehow connected with the City of Torrington who have epilepsy. I heard some from building official Estes this morning about one person or you also know of another spouse person whose child has epilepsy. So it is, it is not the hidden away and secret disease that it used to be. So obviously this is something that is important that we should recognize and I know we've done this for years and years, haven't we Sylvia?
Yes.
For a long time. So the third Wednesday on November, we encourage everybody to wear purple. So we'll go with that. Okay, council? Comments or whatever?
I'll go ahead.
Do we need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
I move to approve the proclamation.
Okay, Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve a proclamation proclaiming November twenty-two as Epilepsy Awareness Month. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have unanimously approved item number two. Item number three is a proclamation proclaiming November first, twenty-twenty-two as Extra Mile Day. Attorney Eddington.
Whereas the City of Torrington, Wyoming is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas the City of Torrington, Wyoming is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. Whereas the City of Torrington, Wyoming is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. Whereas the City of Torrington, Wyoming acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November one, twenty-twenty-two. Now therefore, I, Randy L. Adams, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim November one, twenty-twenty-two to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take the time of this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all of those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Thank you. Obviously, if I look around this room, I can see a whole bunch of people who go the extra mile every day, sometimes professionally, sometimes on their own, and are volunteering to do all kinds of things to make our community better. And that's the whole point of this proclamation. We want to honor those people who step up, do more than is required, do more than is necessary, and make our community a much better community than it has been. Council, do you have anything? Okay.
I'd move to approve the Extra Mile Day proclamation.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. A motion and a second to approve the proclamation proclaiming November first as Extra Mile Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move to item number four, proclamation proclaiming October twenty-third through October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Attorney Eddington.
Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer as the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected more than fifteen thousand of our country's youngest people each and every year. One in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. Whereas founded over twenty years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic X-Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc. are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient cycle social services to children undergoing cancer treatment at the primary children's medical center in Salt Lake City, Children's Hospital of Colorado in Denver, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, I, Randy L. Adams, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim October twenty-third through October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week.
Thank you. Along with the fact that October, we have banners up and down the streets and Main Street in Torrington recognizing breast cancer awareness. There's also some banners around the community doing the same thing. This is a little bit more specific and it's Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Obviously, a difficult thing for families to deal with. Certainly something that we should be very much in favor of supporting and I think great proclamation. Council?
I would move to approve the proclamation.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation regarding Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved that. Item number four, the item that was an amendment to the agenda, is a special event permit, a catering permit from Prado's. And Caroline Prado is here, I know, and Chief Johnson, you have some things that you might want to say about it?
I spoke with Ms. Caroline today. We have a good agreement on hosting the King's Sierra over at the Paris Hall. Standard things that we ask for anybody who's hosting there. No concerns on our end. They know what they're doing with their liquor license. We don't have any concerns.
Caroline, would you like to speak or?
No.
That's all right. Okay. Council, do you have any questions for either the Prados or for Chief Johnson? Okay.
I'd move to approve this application for a catering permit.
Thank you, Councilman Kenny. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the catering permit for the King's Sierra this coming October twenty-second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have unanimously approved it. Good luck.
Have fun.
Item number five, well thirteen building transfer requests. Staff recommends transferring the building located at thirty-six ninety-five Big Horn from the Water Department to the Parks Department. Mr. Estes?
Thank you, Mayor Council. What this is, if you're aware, we have an old utility wellhouse up on Big Horn Avenue or Big Horn Street. We put it up for sale, had a market evaluation done in April of twenty-one. That valuation suggested we have a listing price of fifty-five to sixty thousand. So what we did by law is we advertised it three times in the paper back in probably June or July. Never got any takers. Nobody even looked at it. So it's been sitting. It's had a for sale sign on it. I've had some interest, some people calling. The problem with the building is it's really a commercial building in a residential zone. So if the normal resident wants to buy that, they generally want to do something commercially because you can't store anything outside without a variance. You couldn't do anything else pretty much without a variance. Unless it's a government building, which is allowed in that zone. So in an effort to get it moved over to the Parks Department, we have a bunch of equipment that sits outside at the sports complex. It'd be handy for us just to store that stuff in there because the weather is ruining it. I had to put all new tires on our seater this year and same other stuff that has tires and sits outside. So. We would hope that you would let them go to the Parks Department and Lynette would do her magic with the budget, I hope, to get that.
I just need to know the amount.
Yeah.
So.
So you'd have to.
Building. I've been up to it and looked through it. It's well insulated.
Yeah.
Well-built, very good building, but it's pretty specific in its use.
Yeah, nobody wanted to go through the variance or the change of use stuff, so I just, I never really had any takers on it.
So it'll be moved or it will just be used for the sports department?
Councilwoman Steinbach, it would just move into the Parks Department assets.
Okay, okay.
So then we'll store our equipment there mostly in the winter.
But they're not moving the building.
Nope.
I think that's what you were getting.
Yeah, okay.
No, it just moved departments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's a good question though.
What's in the building now?
Nothing.
Well, it used to be a pump house, right?
Used to be a RO unit in there, yes, sir.
So doesn't it still have the plumbing in there for that?
It's all, all taken and tore out. Couple of old electrical boxes. There's not even power to it right now.
Does it help? It doesn't have a sewer connection, does it?
It could have. It did, it used to have a sewer and water and power, but they disconnected everything from the old well that they, or the old RO unit they had in there.
Are they going to hook electricity back up to it?
Probably, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So you mentioned transferring it from one account to another? What, what is the purpose of doing that?
It belongs to a proprietary fund currently and it's an asset in that fund. So it has to be transferred to the general fund.
Doesn't require purchasing price. It's all on paper, right?
It's all on paper. It usually transfers as a, as a, at book value, but they're asking for market value so they can put that money towards a new building.
The Water Department is.
Yes.
I don't understand how it, if you're just transferring it on paper, how's it going to help them get money for a new building?
It will move it from one budget to the other.
Basically. As an asset. As an asset. Each, each fund has its own list of assets and depreciation schedule. So I'm going to move it from the Water and it is, it's, it's a book entry. It is fully depreciated, so there is no value to it right now. So it would be just a book entry normally.
Or is the suggestion that the amount be fifty thousand? Is that the number?
I don't know that we really spoke to that. I didn't, do you need a value in that from the council?
Probably if I want to do the, the journal entry or the budget adjustment next, next council meeting.
Yeah, the suggested selling price was fifty-five thousand, so it marketed out at fifty thousand.
The value is fifty and that's probably what we should.
I would move to transfer this building from the Water Department to the Parks Department at a value of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Patterson. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the transfer of the building. Is there further discussion? I think we all kind of understand what's going on.
Yeah, basically we're taking it off the market, so.
Saw the big sign with the block on it to move it away. I was up there yesterday looking at. at it because I was trying to figure out where that was at.
We'll put it up here at City Hall or something.
Yeah. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, if there's no further comments, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have approved item number five.
Thank you.
Item number six, approval of the bills from October 5 through October 18. Clerk Treasurer Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I have a couple lists of bills for you tonight, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Page two of the first set, electro test maintenance. It says industrial park repair and test. What was that for?
That is for the substation at the industrial park.
Which one?
It's the one inside the park.
Is it, I know, is it for our industrial park or?
Yes. Oh. Yes, it says industrial park, yes. The other one's called Cold Springs Business Park, so it would say Cold Springs, I'm sure. But I'm sure this was, if I remember right, this one was for the industrial park.
It was a transformer, wasn't it, or something like that? I don't remember exactly either, but I think it was a transformer. It, Lynette, this is not a question, but it looks like our sales tax deposit was up again $116,000. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, it's been in the hundreds, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Keep it that way.
I think I had one more question on. Can't find it now. On the last page of the second set, the Zell Heating and Cooling. Are those like electric heaters? We're down at sanitation and stuff. It says contract four.
Those are the gas heaters at the Baylor?
They're new gas heaters at the Baylor, and he split it between streets and sanitation.
Nobody else has any questions? I'd move to approve the bill that was presented.
Councilman Kelly, thank you. We have a motion to approve the bills. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We have approved the bills. Item number seven is public comment at this time. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak to the council, ask a question, make a comment, other than Lance, of course.
He's always, he's always wanting to come up, isn't he?
Do you have anything you want to say? Good, come on up.
We have to give Mr. Eddington some time to catch his breath from all those proclamations we were.
Since I haven't said anything for a while, I'll come up. So last week, we did fire prevention at Lincoln Elementary. So we had some of our members go over, do some information for them, and then presented them with some little items. We had a truck, one or two trucks went over, let the kids spray some water. So I think that's always well received. And then one of our members saw one of the students just this week, and they were talking about, they went home and actually talked to their families about stuff. So that's good to hear them kind of talk about that. So, and then helped with the parade for homecoming. The Chief Johnson some there, helped with the bonfire. A couple weeks ago, we had some people come up from Colorado and do an extrication class for our members. There's about 10 of us, I think, that attended that. And so it was a Saturday. It was just a day long. Did some classroom stuff, then went and cut some cars up, so. It's a fun thing to do when people aren't involved with it. You know, it's just neat to learn new stuff. Be interesting. We'll try to implement some of what we learned, but these people are coming out of Colorado where they run 15 to 20 calls a day, and they can do stuff in three to five minutes where we run two calls every two or three years type thing. So, but it's always good to kind of refresh, learn some new stuff, use our equipment. So that's kind of what's happening on the fire front.
I saw a posting from Michael, short Michael.
Schuler.
Yeah, Michael, who was very impressed with what he learned.
Like I said, it's fun. I mean, it's to go and use the tools and be able to do that to the metal and learn that stuff is a lot of fun. But it's a lot more stressful and not fun when there's people involved. So, but it's important to know. I mean, it's about 3%, 4% of our calls, but it's kind of usually a very important when it happens. So luckily, it's not something we do a lot, but you know, we do have to be ready when and if it does happen.
Do you have two of those sets now, the jaws of life?
We have a battery set. You guys helped us purchase that last year along with the rural, and then we still have our hydraulic set. So we could need be, if we have multiple vehicles, we could do, you know, work on two cars at once, or work on two sides at once now. Where before, we were just limited to our power unit, and so kind of just one side, one vehicle, so.
Yeah. Make everything go faster if you have two.
Yes. And you know, it's quite a few years ago, we had a car that was down in one of the canals. It was dry, but we had to carry everything down there. Now it'd be a lot easier just to carry the tool because you don't have the hose, the power unit, and the tool. Now you can just grab the tool and go. So kind of frees up your movement and your mobility a little bit, not having the hose connected to the power unit.
Couple of weeks ago, didn't you mention something about trick or treat night?
Trunk or treat?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be helping Chief Johnson and everybody downtown with that. Typically, we put a truck on each end of it. And so, yeah, we're prepared and getting ready for that as well.
Wasn't there something about smoke detectors too?
Yes, in the past, and we're going to do it. And I do need to get ahold of some of the people. The ministry group has handed out 9-volt batteries, and then we have handed out smoke detectors to people. So if someone comes by and we just ask, you know, do you have smoke detectors? And if they say no, we'll give them a smoke detector to put up at their house. And then, like I said, the ministry group has handed out 9-volt batteries. And I don't know, I think last was, did they do it last year? Do you know, Dennis? They handed out about 350 9-volt batteries, I think.
500 the other day?
Okay. So they're planning on doing it again, and they go fast. And we just think it's good change of time to try to remind people to change their batteries, or at least check everything with them, you know. So we hope that the people that are taking the smoke detectors are actually putting them up and not just free goods that's set it on the counter and maybe we'll use it, maybe we won't. But you know, just an attempt to try to help out the community, so.
I just put a new one up in my basement. It's not that hard. It was two screws.
Right.
Yeah, so. Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Anything else? All right.
Just one more thing. Anything special happening next month?
That I can think of. Little bit, so we'll see how that goes.
Just in case Lance doesn't want to mention it. Lance is getting married next month, right?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yep. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I do. I have something I would like to bring up to the council and to Lynette also because it's going to affect her. I'd like to see us put the paying the bills part of this into the consent agenda. And it's, I'm just throwing it out there for right now. We don't have to act on it right now or anything, but because I haven't talked to Lynette about it, and I talked to Mayor Adams about it this afternoon, and I know it had been there at one point, and at another point, they took it out. But I, you know, we're supposed to be reading all of the, about the bills except the new ones that we get, and so we should be ready to use those or do that in a consent agenda, in my opinion. And if we have questions later about it, then we can talk to Clerk Treasurer Strecker.
Well, and if you do that, because I would support that too, if you do that and there is an issue or whatever, it could be pulled off the consent agenda and dealt with it. So it's, yeah, it still leaves flexibility if something comes up.
Anyway, I'd like for us to consider that and see if.
I think we did that once, and we decided not to do that because of the transparency with the public, not knowing what the bills are being paid.
Well, it's published in the paper.
It's still published.
It's published in the paper after they're paid, though, not before. See if.
But people can come here and get.
But it's part of this consent agenda. They won't generally speak up against it before they come up.
I think what would happen was when Mike Barney was the mayor, there was some concern by people, some people in the community, that we were not being transparent. And in order to accommodate that, it was bought out of the consent agenda and put on the agenda.
Okay.
I think, you know, it's been, I think for the most part corrected. We have live transmission from KGOAS. We have good coverage from Torrington Telegram. It's on our Torrington, City of Torrington website. I guess I'd be in favor of doing the same thing.
Something we can talk.
Torrey don't want to do anything with it tonight, but.
No.
Yeah, and it is published, all of the bills are attached to the agenda before the meeting, when it's published.
Friday afternoon.
Now, do you, this like the second set that we got tonight, is that added to the website, so it's there too?
We usually don't get that until right before we come, but I can add it later if that would help. We can think about it.
Yeah, I think we ought to think about it, and because I think there's lots of good comments that need to be considered and before we try to move forward with anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McKinney. Is there any other comments? Seeing no one rise to the podium, I guess we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, I think we're going to do an executive session first. Ms. Eddington, is that what you wanted to do?
Okay, at this point, we are going to adjourn our regular session of the Torrington City Council, pause for about three or four minutes, and then open into an executive session. Need a motion to that end?
I'd move to go and do a pause and then go into executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn our regular session and move to executive session in about three minutes. All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.